As I call your name, please indicate your attendance. Chris Clark?
Here.
Dennis Edwards? Tim Benton?
Here.
Gary Rota? Gary Rota? Vincent Rosier?
Here.
Cory Singletary? Alan West? Alan West? Glenn McCoy?
Here.
Roger Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven in attendance.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like for us to stand and ask Mr. Clark if he really is in our indication, followed by Mr. Tim Benton if he is in our pledge of allegiance. I need a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I move.
I have a motion by Mr. Tim Benton, a second by Mr. Rosier. Any discussion? Add to? If not, I yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, you have seven yeses.
Thank you so very much. At this time, I need a motion to approve the minutes for the May seventeenth regular meeting. I have a motion from... I have a motion by Mr. McCoy, a second by Mr. Rosier. Any discussion of the minutes? If not, I yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven yeses.
At this time, I yield to Dr. Axon.
Thank you, Chairman Carroll, board members. This time we have our spotlights and recognitions. First off, we'll be starting with our beginning Teacher of the Year. Blake County Schools is pleased to introduce the twenty twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Beginning Teachers of the Year. For schools that have beginning teachers, the staff chose one beginning teacher to represent their school as the Beginning Teacher of the Year. So tonight, we'd like to recognize the following Beginning Teachers of the Year. Ms. Bridget Baldwin, Liston Town Middle School. Ms. Laura Bryant, Tarheel Middle School. Ms. Julie Kennedy from Liston Town Primary School. Ms. Hillary Johnson from Bladen Early College High School. Ms. Sabra Ludlin, East Bladen High School. Ms. Caitlin Sykes from West Bladen High School. We'd also like to announce the Blake County Schools' twenty twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Beginning Teacher of the Year. Will be representing Blake County Schools, Ms. Bridget Baldwin from Liston Town Middle School. So congratulations to these teachers. Teacher Assistance of the Year. Blake County Schools is pleased to introduce the twenty twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Teacher Assistance of the Year. For schools that have teacher assistants, the staff chose one teacher assistant to represent their school as the Teacher Assistant of the Year. Tonight, we'd like to recognize the following Teacher Assistance of the Year. Ms. Jennifer Alford, Plainview Primary School. Ms. Vicki Colbert, Bladenboro Middle School. Ms. Gaila Collins, Liston Town Primary School. Ms. Wanda Daniels, East Arcadia Elementary School. Trista Hester, Plaeton School Discovery. Ms. Barbara Keaton, Liston Town Primary School. Ms. Charlene Lewis, Bladenboro Primary School. Ms. Cynthia Lynch, Bladen Lakes Primary School. Ms. Brenda McDowall, Dublin Primary School. Ms. Sarah Smith, West Bladen High School. Congratulations to all by Teacher Assistance of the Year. At this time, we'd also like to announce the Blake County Schools' twenty twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Teacher Assistant of the Year. Representing our district, Ms. Gaila Collins from Liston Town Primary School. Blake County Schools is pleased to introduce the twenty twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Teachers of the Year. Each school selected a teacher to represent their school as Teacher of the Year. So tonight, we'd like to recognize the following Teachers of the Year. Ms. Paula Beck, Liston Town Middle School. Ms. Heather Bobby, Tarheel Middle School. Ms. Leanne Prissom, Dublin Primary School. Ms. Tanya Bryan, Liston Town Primary School. Ms. Carol Byrd, Bladenboro Middle School. Ms. Ashley Davis, Plainview Primary School. Dr. Robin Donaldson, Bladen Early College High School. Ms. Brenda Flowers, East Bladen High School. Ms. Tara Kidley, Bladenboro Primary School. Ms. Crystal McColsky, West Bladen High School. Ms. Natasha McMillan, Plaeton School Discovery. Ms. Deanna Ratliff, East Arcadia Elementary School. And Ms. Christie Smith, Bladen Lakes Primary School. Let's give all of our Teachers of the Year a round of applause. At this time, we'd like to announce the Blake County Schools' twenty twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Teacher of the Year. Ms. Brenda Flowers from East Bladen High School.
And smiling and being beautiful and handsome.
At this time, we'd like to recognize the Principal of the Year. Our Bladen County Schools' twenty twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Principal of the Year is Ms. Vanessa Ruffin from Plainview Primary School. Ms. Ruffin will continue to represent Blake County Schools. As she transitioned to be the Principal of Bladenboro Middle School. So congratulations, Ms. Vanessa Ruffin.
Someone more perfect.
At this time, we'll move to citizens' participation. According to our Board policy twenty-three-ten, the first part of the least of the regular scheduled board meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through the public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. However, the public comment session will not exceed thirty minutes. Total except by majority vote of the board. During the public comment period, the board chairs will recognize the speakers in order which they will have signed in. Speakers will not be allowed or permitted to... And speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. At this time, do we have any citizens' participation?
Yes, Mr. Carroll, we have three. First, Ms. Liz Ruffin Cox, and Mr. Donnell Gullins, and then Mr. Dane Smith.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to make two requests. My colleague often reminds me and our students and staff members that everything starts with the man in the mirror. I'm here because I do not like what I see when I look in the mirror. Something has to change. As a counselor, I'm an advocate for students, parents, teachers, and the community at the school level, the district level, and at the state level. Our students are struggling, not just because of COVID. That just exacerbated the issue. My first request is to challenge you all. A challenge to visit the schools, talk to the students, the staff, teachers, principals, and the counselors. Ask about the data of our students. Something has to change in the way we conduct the business of educating our future. My second request is for equity and access to dual enrollment courses offered through Blake County Community College. Some students are unable to participate because they can't afford to purchase the books and the access codes required to complete the coursework. Since we purchased books for our early college students, why can't we purchase students for ineligible students from East and West Bladen? James Baldwin said, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced." Thank you for your time and attention.
Good evening, welcome back, Chairman, members. In twenty eighteen, my colleague Ms. Cox and I addressed the school board without concern regarding the pervasive and systemic free and appropriate public education concerns referenced by Blake County students. For over a year, she and I sought to get the board to consider establishing a non-penitent, more structured alternative academic setting for struggling students who require additional interventions. It was not until Ms. Cox and I received the support of, from two colleagues, for the board member to admit, obviously, she and I wasn't blowing smoke. Sirs, I don't know smoke. However, I am an advocate for free and appropriate public education for all children. Based on students' historical and current academic attendance and discipline data, we are receiving and we have received, and we continue to receive, a free and appropriate public education for all Blake County students has not been and continues not to be a viable reality. This was a major concern before the pandemic. Now this concern is on steroids. If you review the current data from the last one point five years, it is obvious that we are on life support as a district. Since twenty fourteen, out of four Bladen County middle schools, only one school had a B performance rating, and that was only one time. I agree that our school's agent instruction should be addressed. However, my contention is, what are we willing to do differently to ensure that the students we house in the state-of-the-art building are going to be adequately prepared to meet that mission statement of Blake County Schools? Sirs, going forward, with the realization, time is not on our side for us to get it right, I assure you, I will continue to advocate for the future of all Blake County students at whatever cost. I urge you to look after that. Thank you.
Board members, I'm Dane Smith. We've met a couple times now. I concern Blake County Schools' students, parents. I'd start by stating I do greatly appreciate your efforts to lead our school district, especially through the nineteen, twenty, and twenty-twenty-one school years. I can't imagine the stress and additional responsibilities that came along with COVID. I wanted to share with you the reason, or some of the reasons, for my passion for the proper education of all students in Blake County. I grew up here, always lived in Blake County. I have fond memories of my school career. I remember leaving school early on the first day of spring because of snow. I think I was in third grade, I had Miss Phillips. I remember Miss White, and I believe I may have been in her first class as a new fourth grade teacher. I remember the excitement of attending Plaeton School Discovery. I'm still amazed to be led to courses that were offered all those years ago. Had many great teachers and coaches there. Probably spent too much time in ISS in this period, but I gained a good friend. Owned East Bladen, I was in the last Cougar class. Granted, I wasn't sure if I was going to graduate until the last day of school. My eligibility was in the hands of Miss Phillips. I was not a great math student. As a... As proud as I am of Blake County, I'm equally concerned about the education of the students. I'm a concerned parent and a business owner. I have some dear friends and have had, over the years, coworkers that graduated from Blake County Schools. Many of these folks struggle with reading, writing, and basic math skills. Make no mistake, they're great people. Think of one of them, ones that... They're ones that contribute at a high level to our community, and they have and hold good jobs, mostly in maintenance and/or trade work. Whereas I think through this, it's hard to believe that these folks have a hard time reading and writing as they graduate from Blake County Schools. I think, it appears to me, that No Child Left Behind is equated to the watering dam of our overall education system. Their lack of skills is certainly not your fault. However, you are currently in a position to bring about forward progress and make changes that will significantly improve the quality of our future community and their contributing citizens. As parents, we can and have a desire to be a great ally for you. How can we work together to create better outcomes for Blake County students? The students in Blake County deserve the best education available. I'm happy to hear about some of the changes that we spoke about that Dr. Axon is proposing implementing. Having an academic coach at each school will greatly increase opportunities for many students. If properly utilized and maintained, the advisory boards will be a great asset to the school district as a whole. The education system here in Blake County is vital to all county citizens. Top performing school districts are more likely to attract motivated parents looking for better education for their children, bringing in more people to our communities. Property values are much higher in top performing school districts, adding tax revenues to their respective communities. The list goes on and on. I see that I'm out of time, so I'm gonna delete my last few paragraphs. Thank you for your time and opportunity to address the board.
Now, we'll move to our information items, Ms. Esters and Ms. White.
Good evening, Board Chair, Mr. Carroll, board members. In June of twenty twenty, Session Law Twenty Twenty-Seven was approved by the North Carolina General Assembly and is an act to acquire to require the State Board of Education to adopt a school-based mental health policy and to require SECP twelve school units to adopt and to implement a school-based mental health plan that includes a mental health training program and a suicide risk referral protocol. Blake County Schools' plan is to promote student mental health and well-being, assesses and improve upon the effectiveness of support for the mental and social-emotional health and substance use needs of its students and staff. The plan addresses a continuum of mental and social-emotional health support and services that consist of the following elements: universal promotion of mental and social-emotional wellness and prevention through poor instruction, curriculum, and evaluation; early intervention for mental and social-emotional health, referral, treatment, and reentry; a suicide risk referral protocol that is provided to school personnel who works directly with children; training is required for these programs; a six-hour mental health training, sex trafficking, and child abuse identification intervention, and child abuse mandatory reporting. And this is for the mental health plan and suicide prevention protocol.
Any questions? You have a copy of that on your board docs? Thank you so very much. Dr. Axon, Ms. Harrison?
Thank you, Chairman Carroll, board members. Tonight, I want to give you a brief overview of ESER two and ESER three. These are federally funded programs that are part of American Rescue Act of the legislation concerning COVID-nineteen and the impact on school districts. You did receive a copy in board docs of a plan overview. It's about fourteen pages. This does highlight the needs assessment as well as steps for data analysis. As we do know, data is an important part of what we do. And being strategic in using that data is important to address students' academic and social-emotional needs. And that is a part of this, is being able to use that data to make informed decisions on what is best to help support students. We know that COVID-nineteen did have a tremendous impact on our students, and we have two major things moving forward for us that are concerns. Obviously, learning loss and social-emotional learning. There are some identified allowable uses for ESER two and ESER three. It's actually a similar application. We had a relatively quick timeframe to get this turned into DPI, to go ahead and get the process going, but also we'll have additional follow-up as we move through this and closely define the budget a little more. But I do want to highlight the allowable uses of the ESER two and ESER three. It does have to be connected back to the impact of COVID on the school district. So the following areas are allowable uses for ESER two and ESER three. And you'll see some descriptions there in board docs. First of all, there's addressing learning loss. In ESER three, a minimum of twenty percent of a public school unit's allocation must be directed toward that. The summer learning program is also a part of that as well. Although, summer learning is also listed separately. Facility repairs and improvements to minimize virus transmission. So those kind of things that would enhance virus transmission prevention in schools. Improving air quality, which may be inspection, testing, maintenance, repair, projects to improve indoor air quality, could be HVAC upgrades, boilers, chillers, and even window and door repair replacements are a part of that. Coordination of preparedness and response that is working with all local agencies, such as your health department and other agencies as it relates to the ability for prevention, preparation, and response to coronavirus and other communicable diseases. Providing principals and leaders with resources. These are direct allocations to schools. We have actually already sent out a planning allotment to the schools for principals now to consider as a part of their school improvement planning. There will be an additional area, which is addressing unique needs of special populations. And this is another area that is direct funded to schools to use for those identified areas of criteria. Improvement in preparedness and response. So again, that kind of piggybacks off of another one, but it is a separate area that's in there. This deals with procedures and systems to improve response efforts. Training to minimize virus transmissions. That's training and PPE for staff of the school district in terms of sanitation, minimizing the spread of infectious diseases. PPE and supplies to clean and sanitize are still a part of this as well. We do know there'll be some ongoing things as we move into the fall as it relates to this. Long-term closure activities in the event that there is long-term closure again at some point. With COVID-nineteen, this deals with specifically looking toward providing meals, ensuring technology is available for students, providing guidance on carrying out the provisions of IDPA, other special educational services that should be present for students in the event there was a long-term closure, so that those students would still receive those services that they are to receive. Educational technology, which includes hardware, software, and connectivity, is one... Another part of ESER. Mental health services. This is providing mental health services and supports to students. This is another area of ESER that is important and is highlighted. I did mention already, summer learning, that and addressing learning loss. They are listed separately, but they are two different parts of ESER, but they do coincide together. The learning loss also goes into the actual school year and supports and resources you can do for students there. And then there is a general category that's other ESER eligible activities. That's the last one that's there. And this deals with continuity and operation of services for the LEA in which COVID-nineteen has impacted, as not previously stated. But you'll see there is initial plan details. We provide a description and some impact measures. Obviously, this will be fine-tuned as we move through this process. This was just to go ahead and get this into DPI so that they could go ahead and get the allocations to the district. That also, obviously, we had the summer learning program that needed to be funded, so that was... We need to go ahead and get this in. But we did want to share this with the board tonight for information about these areas, and we'll continue as we get to the specific details. There'll be some projects and all we'll have to get you all to approve. And as we work through this budget, that'll be a part of planning for the budget for ESER two and ESER three. I will share those dollar amounts with you. ESER two, allocation for the district. And Ms. Harrison, correct me, I think this goes through the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, is that right?
ESER two goes through twenty-three, ESER three goes through twenty-four.
Okay, good. Thank you, ma'am. ESER two is nine million, two hundred fifty-nine thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars. And ESER three, which does have the required twenty percent going to learning loss, is twenty million, seven hundred eighteen thousand, and eleven dollars. So those are our planning allocations from DPI for ESER two and ESER three. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have at this time concerning ESER two and ESER three.
Thank you, Dr. Axon. At this time, I need a motion to accept our agenda. I have a motion to accept. I have a motion by Mr. Vince Rosier, taken by Mr. Chris Clark. Any discussion? If not, I yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
Thank you, sir. As I call your name, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark? Dennis Edwards? Tim Benton? Vincent Rosier? Cory Singletary? Glenn McCoy? Roger Carroll? Mr. Chairman, you have seven yeses.
Thank you so very much. At this time, we'll move into action items. Your view, Dr. Axon?
First item will be Mr. Grant, in terms of... It's okay with the Department of Settlements.
Due to the terms of the open meetings law, the board is required to report the terms of any settlement that's been entered in open session. The board was a party to a lawsuit involving name... Having the name of Teresa Carter versus Board of Education. This lawsuit was filed on July sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, including claims for discrimination, retaliation, and hostile work environment. The first two claims were dismissed summarily by the judge on August thirty-first, twenty... Uh, two... Twenty twenty, leaving only one claim pending, which is the hostile work environment claim. The board entered into a mediated settlement conference, and at the end of the mediated settlement conference, it was agreed that the board would pay a sum of forty-five hundred dollars with no admission of liability. The Ms. Carter would agree, and has dismissed all claims, signed a full release, including an acknowledgment that there's no admission of liability, and the settlement money has been paid. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I need a motion to...
I don't need any action.
You don't need any action, okay. Dr. Axon?
Thank you, Chairman Carroll. This time, we want to discuss the school reopening plan for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. As we know, the school year will begin for students on Monday, August the twenty-third, and there is pending legislation in board docs that should say Senate Bill Six Fifty-four instead of Six Eighty-four. But Six Fifty-four does require, if approved, for schools to reopen for in-person instruction for all students. Except by special provisions, public school units will not be able to use remote instruction to satisfy the minimum required instructional days or hours on the school calendar. Public school units will be able, if approved, to use remote instruction for up to five days or thirty instructional hours for inclement weather when possible. In addition, public school units will have the authority in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year to make day-to-day decisions concerning whether to shift individual schools or classrooms that are providing in-person instruction to temporary remote instruction as necessary based on COVID-nineteen exposures that would result in sufficient school personnel and required quarantine. We are required, as a part of ESER three, to publish a reopening plan. So now I'm requesting approval of the board to approve this plan for reopening all five days for traditional face-to-face instruction beginning on Monday, August twenty-third, for students, and that we will only utilize remote instruction as allowable by most current legislation. I'm requesting approval of the reopening plan tonight.
I need a motion to accept this reopening plan for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. I have a motion by Mr. Chris Clark, a second by Mr. Vince. Any discussion? I just have one. I just have one mask.
At this time, the government has extended the mask mandate for schools through the end of July. So we'll wait to see additional guidance there. But at this point, we don't know until that expires if that will be extended or not. But at this point, masks are still required for students in schools at this point.
If no more questions, a yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
Thank you, sir. As I call your name, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark. Dennis Edwards. Tim Benton. Vincent Roger. Corey Singletary. Glenn McCoy. Roger Carroll. Mr. Chairman, you have seven yeses.
Uh, Dr. Raxton?
Thank you, Chairman Carroll and board members. As required in the pending legislation and was in previous versions, the district must, must adopt a remote learning plan and guidelines for the school year that will govern when, if remote learning has to be activated either for inclement weather as stated in the pending legislation or for COVID nineteen. This is very similar to what we had previously with some modifications specifically to the official learning management system, as well as guidance for teachers and staff to utilize the learning management system as a part of their instruction so that students become acclimated with that in the event that we have to move to remote instruction. This does outline the guidelines for those days, specifies the grading requirements, attendance requirements, and in terms of communication expectations. Again, going through this, this does govern the general curriculum. So it would apply to all students. And of course, if there's additional guidance, that would come through program areas that we've had in the past as well. If there's any special provisions, we talked about even with S R two and three about populations such as E C and others that have to have special services. Those will be taken care of as well as a part of this. But we need approval of the board tonight to adopt the remote learning plan so that we have that file with D P I in the event that we have to use remote instruction in any period in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I need a motion to accept this remote learning plan for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. For move. I have a motion by Mr. McCoy and taken by Mr. Chris Clark. Any discussion? If not, I yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
As I call your name, please indicate your vote. Mr. Chairman, you have seven yeses.
Thank you very much. This time, I turn it over to Mr. Worley.
We did have a presentation by two contract managers at risk, the last board meeting, that were Bordeaux Construction, Metcon. Just to update you, construction manager at risk is a contractor that we hire that works on behalf of us to help put the design of the school and the construction of the school. And the at-risk portion is, they have to give us a guaranteed maximum price going into this school as far as, it's not like a cost plus. We do have a cap on the cost of it. I provide some information to you. I think when I, the board docs on Friday, with the different line-by-line, Metcon and Bordeaux, there was one clarification that didn't look right to me that's down on the bottom. It's not a home or change orders. And it was a mistake that Metcon put in theirs. We had twenty-six percent of Jones County, fifty-four percent of Socostes. So I ask you to disregard that. They had clarified that today. That was actually the percentage of M and B or minority business enterprises, and they had them in the wrong section. But I've listed a number of municipal projects both firms have, the number of schools both firms have, a time that they're saying to build a prototype, the number of energy management schools that they have built, their current C M R, which is a construction manager at risk workload, and then their current workload. The M B percentage is the minority business enterprise. Met, Bordeaux gave us two different projects, and then Metcon gave us one to actually add up. It's the number of employees. That took the last three schools, guaranteed maximum price to actual price, and their percentages if they were over or above. Then I looked at change orders on two schools. So both those were actually the same. That is one good thing. By contract management at risk, you should have no change orders. So we're both aligned on that. The B M capable is a three-D modeling system where we can actually see the construction before it's built. And that helps us to work through any design problems before they hit the field. It also does accounting and updates us on where each subcontractor is at on schedule. So that's a lot, it gives us a lot of information on what's going on in the project. We had a facility meeting last Thursday. At the time, the facility committee recommended accepting Bordeaux Construction. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Worley. Didn't Metcon, the school that we're getting built, didn't Metcon construct that same building in whole count?
Yes, sir. It's the same footprint. We've changed a few things, but we have, it is the exact prototype that we do.
Can you explain to me the current C M workload and, what workload and those figures?
Right now, the current construction manager at risk workload for Bordeaux is a hundred and fifty-three million dollars. Metcon is one hundred million. And then their current workload, that is all their work that they have, either with the construction manager or risk or just prime contractor. Bordeaux is fifty, a hundred fifty-five million, and then Metcon's a hundred fifteen million.
So what was, what was some of your decisions in going into contracting Bordeaux for this construction site? This new school?
Well, it's actually the committee's decision. So they probably had to stick with itself on that portion of it. Both companies are very good companies. It's, there's some differences between the companies, but they're, both of them are very good companies. And you can see the numbers are pretty close all the way down the line.
Mr. Singletary?
Yes, sir.
One of the thing, well, two of the things that led me to Bordeaux. One is homegrown, people running this company. We know that they have children that have come through our school system. We know that some of them live here in Bladen County. Me personally, I felt like that they would take pride in this building and especially with it being there in Tar Heel. And the other is they did a tremendous job on building our jail that was just constructed.
But my thing is, should we go with somebody who has already had that experience in the same building that was construction, constructing in another county? Or are we gonna play politics in our kids' education?
There is one point I would like to bring. The county has only authorized us for twenty-two million at this time. We have to stay within that budget or we, the construction manager at risk will actually work the contract with the architect, and they will derive a guaranteed maximum price. So I've had a couple of people talk to me that it, we're at twenty-two million right now, and that's all that approved.
What, what is Bordeaux gonna charge the builder compared to what Metcon's gonna charge for the construction?
We have to go in and negotiate the contract, kind of like the architect, because they're gonna be working for us. And that will be the next process that they will finish the plans, and they will come out with a price. And as that price comes back, then we do not have to take that price or that contract. We can end the contract at that point in time with a construction manager at risk. We can stop that contract at any point. But right now, we're estimating with a prototype, with no changes, no added classrooms, no energy consumption, it's right at twenty-two million dollars.
But y'all didn't negotiate, y'all didn't negotiate any type of figures when y'all had this facility meeting? I think that would have been important to make a decision on the contract.
Well, unfortunately, with North Carolina law and construction manager at risk, we cannot negotiate or talk about pricing. It's the same as the architect contract until we have hired them.
Well, if it, if it was me, I would love to know the figure before I pay somebody to do something. And, and as a, as a, as a board, I think that's, we need to know the figures before we make a decision on doing any type of construction, especially at school.
I agree with that. And that, that's what we're hiring a construction manager at risk for, is to come up with a price that it's gonna cost to build this project, for the guaranteed maximum price.
But we, but we have to make that decision tonight.
To get the price that it's gonna cost. Now, you, they do not have to accept the price they give you. You do not have to use them. But at some point in time, we've got to get a guaranteed maximum price of what this school's gonna cost us so we can move forward.
Do you think we should hold off on that? Until we get that price?
We, we won't know that price until we accept one of these to give us the price. We don't have to accept it. If it's too much, we can come back and go another route. If it's too high, then we don't have to accept it. We don't have to accept this construction manager. The construction manager will go through the plans and see if there's any places that they feel... They're actually working on our behalf, that they can save any cost, and that could be in design, is most likely. And as you know, I've talked to the county about this. This school's going up ninety-five thousand dollars a month every month of the week. And that's what we're, the architect's estimate is probably correct. The construction managers, I may not be clear. They're actually gonna go in and help arrive a price that this school is on the cost of Bladen County schools. And they will give us a guaranteed maximum price that it will not exceed.
Any other questions? Mr. Worley is asked to accept Bordeaux as a construction manager. I need a motion. I have a motion by Mr. Dennis, was taken by Mr. Tim Benton. Any further discussion? If not, I yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
As I call your name, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark. Dennis Edwards. Tim Benton. Vincent Roger. Corey Singletary.
No.
Glenn McCoy.
Standing.
Roger Carroll. Mr. Chairman, you have four yeses, two of staying, and one no.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Worley. At this time, I need a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing personnel as per the M C G S one forty-three point three eighteen point eleven. To consult with an attorney if needed, as per M C G S one forty-three point three eighteen eleven. And to discuss students, students reassignment and student discipline, as per the nineteen seventy-four Family Rights and Privacy Act. Ma'am, I need a motion to come out of closed session. I have a motion by Mr. Roger and taken by Mr. McCoy. Any discussion? If not, I yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
You have six yeses.
Thank you very much. Dr. Davy?
I recommend that you approve the personnel list action item.
I need a motion to approve the personnel items.
I move that we approve the personnel item.
I have a motion by Mr. McCoy and a second by Mr. Vince Roger. Any discussion? A yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
As I call your name, please indicate your vote. Mr. Chairman, you have six yeses.
Mr. Dennis, come over. Very good. Thank you, sir.
You have seven yeses.
This time, I move to board members' concerns. Do we have any? If not, the only thing I have, please remember our children and our summer school teachers and those that are still working really hard. Continue to remember them in our prayers. Turn to you, Mr. Super Terry.
Thank you, Chairman Carroll and board members. Just want to share a few things with you all. Our summer learning program has kicked off. We just completed our first week. Today, we have an average attendance of eight hundred and sixty across the four sites. The program will be continuing through Friday, July the second. Do want to remind the board, we will need to call a special call board meeting for Monday night, June twenty-eighth at five thirty. And this will be for the purpose of closing out the budget for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. So if you please make note of that, and we'll send that to you all.
Twenty-ninth, correct?
Ninety-twenty-eighth, is that right?
Twenty-eighth, I wonder.
Yes, sir. It's five thirty. We are currently working on collecting supply lists for next school year to go ahead and get these out to families. We want to make sure we're proactive and get those out early so that families can go ahead and make plans as they prepare for next school year. We will also be returning back to our approved policy for school uniforms beginning with the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So we'll also communicate that information out to our parents as well. As shared tonight, Senate Bill six fifty-four is making progress in legislation. You all approved the remote learning plan and reopening plan tonight. There are some other areas of interest in this legislation. There are several, but I do want to highlight, highlight a few of these for you now. One is, part of that is, if the legislation is passed, is a waiver of the school performance grades for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year due to the assessment data being heavily impacted by COVID nineteen. There is also a proposed delay in implementing social studies standards until the twenty-two, twenty-three school year as a part of that legislation as well. And there's also, there's been information shared across about a influx of kindergarten students across the state. So one piece of that legislation is to, for the twenty-two, excuse me, twenty-one, twenty-two school year, would be to delay the class size legislation for kindergarten and keep that at a class average of twenty versus eighteen, which was supposed to be implemented for this year. Again, this is all pending approval of Senate Bill six fifty-four. Also, Bladen County Schools did an application with the North Carolina Education Corps, and we have been selected as one of the districts to work with them. Just a quick background on North Carolina Education Corps is a joint project between the North Carolina State Board of Education and the Governor's Commission on Volunteerism and Community Service, as well as local public school districts. It is an independent nonprofit that works toward matching hard-working, service-oriented North Carolinians with opportunities to make a life-changing difference in the lives of young students across the state. Corps members who are part of that commit to nine months of part-time paid service as high-impact early literacy tutors. So they're looking at targeting lower grades in terms of literacy. We know that is something that is very much needed. We know that the state is also moving forward with the new science of reading, as well as moving forward in terms of race to the top. The state has also selected M-Class as the diagnostic for all districts. That M-Class was the program that was used about two, three years ago in our schools to help with reading assessment for grades K through three. They are returning back to that, starting with the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Part of this program is that these tutors will be working with our students specifically in literacy as they work through these changes. And we would actually work with them on recruiting these folks in that partnership. with them, uh, on recruiting these, uh, folks in that partnership. In addition, they work closely with the community college and university students, recent college graduates, retirees, and adults who are interested in making an impact in the school. So we're excited about this opportunity, uh, to work forward toward this. Finally, I wanna remind the board of retirement celebration that will take place at Elizabeth Town Middle School on Saturday, June nineteenth, at eleven o'clock. If you'll, uh, if you're able to attend, if you'll please let Ms. Tanya Willis know in Dr. Beatty's office, so we can, um, confirm your attendance on Saturday at eleven o'clock. That will be at Elizabeth Town Middle School in the gym, so. Mr. Carroll, that's all I have for you all tonight.
Will we be reminding the businesses here in Elizabeth Town about uniforms?
Yes, it will be sent out to them as we let them know.
Um, I need a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Mr. Tim Benton, taken by Mr. Roger. Any discussion? I yield you, Ms. Valery.